...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for a very enthusiastic pledge of allegiance. This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted to CPS website. Interested community members to act and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Policy. Anyone speaking tonight during the public input portion of our meeting is notified the superintendent's officer of desire to speak will be provided with these guidelines. Fond requests, written comments received no later than 12:00 PM on the day of the meeting will also be read and made part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment session. So welcome to this meeting of Chelmsford School Committee. Before we start tonight, I'd like to just take a moment to remember a longtime Chelmsford educator, Dennis Hunt, who recently passed away. Mr. Hunt was a science teacher at McCarthy Middle School for over 30 years, and in 1995 was named Massachusetts Biology Teacher of the Year. But beyond his ability to teach was his ability to aspire, inspire. For countless students, Mr. Hunt instilled the love of science that stayed with them into high school, college, and beyond. I can say this without hesitation because of Mr. Hunt's enthusiasm for teaching science and his ability to reach students at all levels that I decided to become a teacher myself. So if everyone wouldn't mind, I'd just like to ask everybody to take a moment of silence in honor of Dennis Hunt. Thank you. All right, first order of business is to approve the minutes of our meeting from October 7th.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of October 7th, 2025?
Second.
Second, okay. Any corrections on the minutes? All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstain?
Abstain.
No abstention. Okay, great. All right, next we'll hear from our CHS representatives.
All right, so School Picture Retake Day is tomorrow for high school students. I thought I would need this, but it came in the mail, it did look too bad. There's a senior Halloween dance at the Chelmsford High School Cafeterias on Saturday, the 25th, at 6:00 PM, and the class of 2027 student representatives had their Halloween movie night on October 18th. And Term One will be ending on October 31st.
Adding off that, there's a half-day this Thursday, very excited for that. And a great win for the volleyball team. It was a tough match against Central Catholic, keeping their unbeaten streak, 18-0, winning the MVC title and being first in the state. PSAT was on Saturday for students. The pep rally is next month. Students are very excited and looking forward to this event. And the CHS Theater is performing the musical Oklahoma exactly one month from today, which is November 21st.
Great, thank you both very much.
Can I just ask a question? When does tickets go on sale for Oklahoma, do you know?
I'm not sure. They usually go on sale like the last week before the show.
Yeah, like one or two weeks before.
Sounds good.
Great. Any other good news?
No, just good news, we just had our third visioning session with our teacher group and parent group for the Parker Building project, which was great, and we all just rushed over here from there. And then tomorrow night, don't forget, from 7 to 9 at the Elks is the larger public session, so we'd love to see some new faces and lots of people show up to give their input and learn a little bit more.
Anybody else have any good news they want to share?
We're in the process of a town meeting
Yep.
right now, and some of us had, all of us, had the pleasure of being there last night. It goes into a second session, right? And some things were approved.
A couple of school projects, yep.
Right? Which was really important to us and to everybody sitting here, because nobody wants to be rained on while they're in school, right? All right, we're gonna get some new roofs.
That's right. And just to add to that, this brought to superintendent's attention, but also my one other side of me, I'll let us know that the Chelmsford High School baseball team was on the cover of the New England Baseball Journal
Yes.
for their state championship last spring, so.
Yes.
So thank you to Dean Conover for letting us know that. All right, anybody here for public comment? Okay.
We didn't have anyone.
No, okay. All right, so we'll move into new business.
All right, first thing in new business, so this is the time of the year that we start to hear from our departments and our schools about some of the work that's taking place. And we're opening up our very first department presentation tonight is Fine and Performing Arts, so we welcome up Dr. Christy Whittlesey.
I just have to leave.
And to hear a little bit about your program, and I see we have a lot of singers in the room, so I'm sure you've got some entertainment later for us.
I do. Thank you, everyone, for having me in tonight to represent the Fine and Performing Arts Department. My name is Christy Whittlesey, and I appreciate this opportunity to share updates on our department's work this fall and upcoming events. Tonight I'll be focusing on two main areas. First, our department's current priorities around accessible arts education and continued curriculum development. And second, celebrating recent student achievements and highlighting upcoming events. We'll conclude with a performance by members of our 5th grade Parker Chorus under the direction of Martha Robertson. All right, this fall, our K-12 music educators are engaging in important professional development focused on accessible arts education. We're working with a first-of-its-kind guide written by the leader of the Berklee College of Music Institute for Accessible Arts Education. This resource offers a comprehensive framework for inclusive arts instruction to support and empower students of all abilities. In two days, on October 23rd, we will have the privilege of hosting the author for a visit with our K-12 music educators to support us in implementing these principles into our music curriculum. This work ensures that all students, regardless of ability, can fully participate in and benefit from music education. We're also continuing our focus on art curriculum development. As you may recall from previous presentations, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Standards for Artistic Practice describe the processes and skills students learn to achieve artistic literacy through four domains: creating, presenting and performing, responding, and connecting. I'm pleased to report that all K-12 CPS Fine and Performing Arts assessments remain aligned to these domains, and we continue to refine this work. This year, our K-8 visual arts teachers are continuing the process of examining and refining our curriculum to focus on alignment in content areas to ensure coherence across grade levels, development of 21st century skills, integration of new media to keep pace with evolving artistic practices, and integration of diverse artists to ensure students learn from varied cultural perspectives. This is an ongoing process, and I want to thank the art team for their efforts as we strive to provide the highest quality programming for our students. And now, for my favorite part, celebrating student success and sharing upcoming events in the arts. In visual art... oop. One moment, there we go. Visual art, we have several exciting initiatives underway. Our annual Youth Art Month K-12 exhibit will be hosted once again by the Chelmsford Public Library, featuring hundreds of pieces of student artwork. Special thanks to the library for hosting this event each year. We will also be submitting work again to the UMass Lowell Annual High School Exhibition, participating in the Memory Project, which creates portraits for children across the world who have faced challenges, and a beautiful way to foster global connections through art. Throughout the year, we'll also be hosting school-based art shows, and student work will be featured in the Massachusetts Art Educators Association Virtual Exhibit. As events roll out through the year, updates will be shared in the superintendent's more, so keep your eye on those. This is going on its own, so here we are.
I put you back on, I didn't know what slide you were on.
Okay, thank you. Perfect timing. So our theater students are celebrating recent success. Here we go. Last year's musical Beauty and the Beast was a spectacular production, and I'm thrilled to share that it earned significant recognition at the High School Musical Theater Awards, known as the Tammies, as well as the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Awards in the spring. These achievements reflect the exceptional talent and dedication of our students and the excellent direction of our theater staff. So now, looking ahead, our theater students have an exciting season planned, starting with Roger and Hammerstein's classic musical Oklahoma. This musical was originally performed on Broadway in 1943 and was the first to blend comedy, drama, dance, and song, where the songs are used to move the plot forward and not just serve as a break from the story. Today, Oklahoma is still a popular production all over the world. And as you see here, we have many other CHS and middle school theater productions in the works for the year. In music, we have numerous upcoming events and festivals, and you have your list of our concerts and art shows coming up. Our students will be participating in the Mass Music Educators Association All-State Treble Choir Festival and High School All-State Festival in Worcester, as well as MMEA Northeast District Junior, Senior, and Treble Festivals. Many of our ensembles will compete at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, or MICA, festival. And our a cappella groups will participate in several festivals, including the International Championship of High School Acapella, and many more. And all of our events are included on the district website, so keep an eye on that. I also want to highlight a few special music events and programs from this fall. Our elementary and middle school students will be participating in special performance and concert events this year at the State House and Symphony Hall, as well as performances at Woo Sox and Red Sox games that are in the planning stages. Our CHS band, chorus, and orchestra members are preparing for an exciting Disney performance trip this spring, and we've been fortunate to host special guest clinician visits this fall. By the way, CFAM, Chelmsford Friends of Music, is hosting a trivia night this Friday, and if you haven't found your tickets already, they are available through our website. We have had some amazing clinician visits, including Andrew Hitz, who is a Jupiter Artist and National Clinician, who came in to lead a CHS band workshop this week focused on musicianship and performance. And in September, our CHS choirs enjoyed a workshop and performance by OC Times, an internationally recognized barbershop quartet from Orange County, California. The quartet was in town to headline the annual New England Harmony Brigade, and the special event was organized by John Patton, CHS class of 1983, who was active in our music program and saw an opportunity to introduce barbershop harmony to a new generation of musicians. And it was a really wonderful connection between our programs, past and present. All the events and initiatives that I presented today are designed to support students in becoming lifelong participants in and consumers of the arts. We live in a visually and orally literate society, and students' lives are increasingly filled with complex images and sounds. Our mission as Fine and Performing Arts educators is to support all of our students in developing the ability to embrace multifaceted information and experiences, as well as to find joy in and through the arts. And with that, it is my pleasure to welcome three of our Parker Chorus students up, who will introduce the piece they'll be performing for you today. So whoever's speaking can come right up here. Have a seat. There you go. Thank you.
Beloved community, my name is Youssef. My name is Youssef. I am honored to stand with the selected 5th grade chorus members from Parker Middle School. We're excited to perform for you, Tower of Strength. Being in chorus has meant community to me, and I've learned the power of my voice through singing. I hope to share the joy and love with everyone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Dudley, and I'm representing Parker Middle School. I am so excited to sing for you tonight, and I think we all are. We have been working on this warm-up since one of the first days of school. Being in chorus means not only we see the best chorus teacher, but we also sing the best songs, like Tower of Strength. There's also a really cool song that we perform at our winter concert called Rio, Rio Chiu, which is in Spanish, and it is really fun to sing in a different language. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samira. I'm also a proud member of the 5th grade chorus. We thank you, school committee and listeners, for your time on music today. Chorus means opportunity. Opportunity is getting a second chance to show who you are in chorus and getting to work with an awesome chorus teacher. Chorus has taught me what joy is and what passion is, and I hope to share the singing passion. Now we are so excited and grateful to sing Tower of Strength. Thank you.
Group B. Group B. Over here. Then Group A. And the face this way. Yeah. Cool places. So you're gonna turn your backs to your parents. Sorry. And then, group C. Can you back? That's my choice. No, we're doing that. Okay? You can make another row over here. Have you ever had 30 singers in here before?
Might be the worst.
Okay, I might.
You the awesome music chorus teacher?
No, no. No, they just paid me for tonight to come, and it was really last minute. Hmm. Ready, go. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of strength within. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of strength within. All burdens fall from my shoulders. All anxiety slips from my mind. All burdens fall from my shoulders. All anxiety slips from my mind. I let every shackle be loose. I let every shackle be loose, yeah, yeah. I let every shackle be loose. Every shackle be loose. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of strength within. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of strength within. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of strength within. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of anxiety slips from my mind. I am the tower of strength within and without. All anxiety slips from my mind. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of shackle be loose. I am the tower of shackle be loose. I am the tower of shackle be loose. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of shackle be loose. I am the tower of strength within and without. I am the tower of shackle be loose. 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 I let every shackle be loose. I let every shackle be loose, yeah, yeah. I let every shackle be loose. Every shackle be loose. Wow.
Isn't our choral director great?
That's what I've heard.
Thank you all for the opportunity to come in and share.
Well, thank you for coming in, that was a great performance. I really appreciate it. Anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to share?
Just don't forget the crew when it comes to all of the shows. We always have this crew in the back that don't always get talked about.
I only saying that because I'm jaded and my daughter is on crew, so.
Oh, we absolutely could not do it without a full team of casters.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say, I was really impressed. I have a son at Parker, but he does band, so I don't usually get to hear from the chorus, so this is a really special treat and wonderful window of what you all do as a former middle school chorus singer myself. It was really great and heartwarming and wonderful, and you guys did an awesome job holding to your own parts while there were all the different parts moving.
I have a really quick question. You're all in different sections, right? You don't all have chorus the same time every day. Have you all practiced together before tonight?
No.
That's really good.
Wonderful, first time you've all been together. Nice job.
That's fantastic. That's really fantastic. I just want to say, all of your faces are absolutely beautiful. It was so nice to feel alive as you were singing that song. And the song itself
Really good song.
was a great choice.
Good song.
Really great choice. And thank you so much. Thank you.
All I have to say is, you're the opening act for department presentations, everybody's got a big...
High bar.
That's right.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Very briefly, I thought students did a wonderful job. It was excellent to hear you. I appreciate you coming out to the school committee meeting and sharing some of the work that you're doing during the day. As Susan said, it's amazing that you, this is the first time you all performed together. It sounded beautiful. I thought you did a great job, and I really appreciate you coming out to show some of the work that you're doing. And as Dennis mentioned, you know, Christy is setting the bar pretty high for the presentation.
That's right. Watch out, coordinators.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll give him a couple minutes.
Couple seconds.
There.
Thank you.
Well, Joanna had the sweater on.
Our visioning session today. She's also the director of this. And I happen to know that Susan's in the board, she's now had to do apparent orientation for the play. So they had a meeting today of our practice, so she's led a play to this, now a parent meeting, so she's definitely keeping herself very busy outside.
Take a nap.
They were very good, actually. Yeah.
You got a good part.
I liked how they set up the three different pieces.
Yeah? All right, that's it. We can't have another paper.
I know, right?
Can't follow that up. All right, but we do have to follow it up. So next up are school committee and superintendent goals.
Yes, so in your packet tonight are the...
Well, it depends what we make as goals.
What's that?
We can make a single...
I just said it's a little less musical, this next one.
It is a little less.
We can change the goals around and really have.
I can't sing, so that's gonna have to be a P minus, Maria, if I'm required to sing. But no, so we did update the school committee goal, so we actually just used the redlining, and then right below it, we accepted the changes, just so you could see them. But we didn't have any original revisions to my proposed goals of the last meeting, and we'll just present these for discussion. I know, Diana, you had kind of brought up some of the work with Maria on the school committee goal. Just want to make sure we captured your, you know, kind of what you were thinking, and...
Yeah, I...
If these work. Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, just to respond to your point. From my perspective, I think the shifts, I appreciate that the shifts are made, and I think they capture the spirit of what I was hoping they could do, just basically give a little bit more concrete teeth to what that goal was saying.
Any other thoughts on the school committee goals, first of all? Any? Maria, you good?
Yeah, I am. I'm good with it.
All right. If everybody's good with those, then I will take a motion to approve our goals for the '25-'26 school year.
Okay, I move that we approve the Chelmsford School Committee goals for '25-'26 school year.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's goals. Any changes in those? Are those the same? They didn't...
Changes.
What, put a red line?
No, we didn't have any changes.
Okay. All right, so any questions or concerns with the superintendent's goals? Okay, we'll take a motion on those.
I agree. I move that we approve the superintendent's goals for '20-'25-'26 school year. Ask presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
We'll get those posted up to the website tomorrow, and then we'll start the tracking mechanism.
All right. Next is, is it the delegate vote?
So, yeah, we went through the different items at the last school committee meeting as far as positions on things are concerned, but we're just looking to see if we have someone who could represent us that Friday afternoon as the voting delegate.
Okay, is anybody gonna be there Friday afternoon? I know I'm not gonna be there Friday afternoon. I don't know if anybody else is gonna be there Friday afternoon.
It's crazy, the Friday afternoon. No, I'm not.
I really don't want to be.
Do you want to be a delegate on paper and then...
I don't want to be there that long.
Yeah, I know.
I can't stay this year. I did it last year, but I am unable to stay past like 1:30 that day, and I think it's at 3:00.
It's 3:15, yeah.
Yeah.
And I've made, you know, I've made this comment before, like, the votes, I know it's important to state where we mean and vote for MASCE things, but they don't really do anything. I mean, I'm kind of nihilist about this, but like, I'm just saying, I don't know. I'm not staying until...
Is there a mechanism by which, I know it will not necessarily count as a vote, but by which we could share with those who will be present what our endorsements are in terms of the things that we voted on at our last meeting if somebody can't be present in the day of?
I could send an email to like our division chair, you know, just to let him know if you want to do that, sure?
I think it would be a nice gesture to show that we have talked about these things. It might also be a good opportunity to give feedback that by holding this
Yep.
at 3:15 on a Friday, it may be by design that they are hoping to have fewer people and less debate, but I can say that from my experience doing it last year, that was not the impact. It just led to a lot of people who are very unhappy to be there and felt dragged into it. I feel like if they want to make this an important aspect of the convening, then it should be given a prioritized spot on one of the full days.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll send an email to the division chair and let him know both what our votes would be, and then also the fact that, you know, 3:15 on a Friday probably isn't the best time to...
Yeah. I felt the same thing the year I did it. People were clamoring to just end debate and leave the session.
Yeah.
They didn't get the response I think it deserved. It had been the day before, the middle of the day.
I want to truly apologize, but every year on the Friday, it falls on a conference that I have to attend for my own things, so I have to return. It's really awful.
Okay. All right, let's go with that then, all right? We won't have a formal delegate, but I will send an email, let him know how we voted on the resolutions, and then also expressing maybe a desire to have it a little earlier in the week. Okay?
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
No problem.
All right, next up is the middle school CTE exploration policy.
Yes, so we put this on the agenda at the last meeting as for kind of discussion purposes. Again, this was the draft policy that we worked on with Denise Pigeon from Neshoba Tech around sending schools requirements with the new regulations, and so nothing has changed. I put it back on for this one for actual action. So if members have any, you know, questions or would like to talk, we certainly can, but tonight we're actually hoping for action to approve this new policy, and then once it's approved, we'll submit it to MASCE and they'll put it up on the website for us. All districts across the state, sending districts, are required to have a new middle school CTE exploration policy. I believe this is gonna be pretty boilerplate. Most districts have been sharing what they've been writing, so it's pretty consistent, district to district. The only thing that's changing is the type of chapter 74 programs that they are sending school, I'm sorry, they're receiving school actually offer us. So this is something after we put it into effect, obviously we can go back and revisit the future if we had to. I believe this is gonna comply with the regulations that we're required to submit, and after you approve, again, we'll get it up on the website, but I'll also submit it to Desi, and they'll give it their blessing as well.
John, any questions, because you weren't here? Any policies on...
No, I did get to review it before I came in, and then I reviewed it earlier before the meeting, so I definitely understand it, we're good.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions? All right, if not, then we can get a vote.
I make a motion that we approve the middle school career and technical education policy. Ask presented.
I'll second.
Dana's doing great. All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Next up is just the Parker Middle.
Yep, so this is just a reminder that tomorrow night, I know Linda mentioned it earlier, we're going to be hosting our first of three community visioning sessions for the Parker Middle School project. These are open to the public, staff, students, parents, kids, interested community members can come and hear a little bit about the project. Tomorrow is going to be... Tomorrow is going to be largely bringing everyone up to speed with what's happened over the last couple of years to get us to this point, talking about the different grade level configurations we're considering, talking a little bit about the size of the different options, the locations that are being considered. We have Left Field on as our project manager. We have AI3 on as our designer, so we're going to get to meet them, hear a little bit about what's been happening in the internal visioning sessions the last three weeks, and then just thought to have an initial conversation with the community about what they would like to see in a new middle school project. They're also going to lay out the timeline for the project, which we're really kind of getting right into. So I think tomorrow will be a great day if you want to just get re-acclimated with the process. You may have heard about it. Haven't been too in tuned if you're a community member. But I'm going to guess the session's going to run about an hour and a half. It's going to be at the Chelmsford Elks on Littleton Road, so easy to get into, good parking. And I also, just on the agenda, listed the dates for the next two. The second session is going to be on November 20th, and the third session is going to be on December 17th, all at 7:00, all at the Chelmsford Elks. And we're going to gradually kind of build on some of the foundational elements we've been talking about in the internal sessions. And ultimately, December is kind of a big month for us because we're going to be trying to refine our choices a little bit for the first submission to the MSBA, which is due in January. So again, we're going to cover the timeline tomorrow night. All are welcomed. Hopefully, it'll be a good event. Chelmsford Telemedia is going to record it for us. It will not be broadcast live, but it'll be recorded, and we'll be able to get it up on our website and play on a loop, so people in town can watch it as well. So again, just really for informational purposes, wanted to get that out there.
So it's going to be on our website?
Well, it'll be on our web... A link off of our website, but it will also be on Chelmsford Telemedia's.
Yes.
And they'll be playing it on one of their feeds.
Wonderful.
And just also, just mentioning, there is a website dedicated just to the Parker...
We do, yep. In the newsletter this past week, Jenny put a little QR code that you can click to get right to the website. You can also just go to the Chelmsford Public Schools website and hit the Parker school site, and it brings it right to you. And all of that different information for the new building project is going to be right there, links to the different school building committee meetings and the different actions we've taken are all going to be right there in that one location.
All right, so hopefully, we see a lot of people there.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, tomorrow night at 7:00.
Great.
Next item on the agenda six is Joanna's going to share the first quarter financial reports and overview with us. Thanks.
Thank you. In your packet tonight is a memo talking about the fiscal 2026 budget, the actual year-to-date budget report, a grant and revolving fund summary, and the student activity account balances for the high school and both middle schools. So this year's budget is $75,650,000. And I'm going to just highlight some of the variances that have emerged just through the first quarter, so through the end of September. The classroom teacher category, which is the largest of our budget, approximately $27 million, we are favorable by $434,000. As a reminder, we budgeted for the collective bargaining and the cost of living adjustments in this category of 1.6 million. And all the contracts are settled, and this committee approved budget transfers, four budget transfers, moving dollars out of this one account and into the labor accounts where the costs are recorded. And this category is still favorable by $61,689. So later in the year, this money has an opportunity to be reallocated to something else. Also in this category was the salary reserve for lane changes, or that's when a teacher achieves a higher degree. And this committee already approved the budget transfer for those lane changes of $111,000 to the different labor accounts. And this account still has a favorable balance of $16,597. The other reason we're favorable is because we have, when we budget a vacancy, we budgeted at master step three. And then when someone gets hired, if they come in less than that on the salary grid, it would be a favorable variance. And if they come in higher, that's mainly an internal transfer. It would be unfavorable. But when you add all those together, we're favorable by about $186,000. And then the other contributing factor to the favorable variances are approved unpaid leave of absence. The dollar amount is pretty low at this point in the fiscal year, but that will likely increase as the months go on. The next favorable variance is in the specialist teachers, so that's ELL, special ed. They are favorable by $19,000 at this point of the fiscal year for similar reasons as described with the general ed teachers. If you go to page eight and nine, we're favorable in the library media center category by $115,000. And the main reason for this is we have some people in this category who are getting less than what was budgeted, and the timing of filling some of the positions in this category. We're also favorable in the psychological services category by $71,000. And as you may remember, we hired three new school psychologists, and collectively, that category will be favorable by that amount. The employee separation cost is favorable and will remain favorable by about $49,000. This is when a teacher retires and they get the incentive, and they can get that incentive. We budget for it in July, which is this fiscal year, but we paid them out in June, which was last fiscal year, because we had some favorable variances last year. So that money will also be available to come to the committee for reallocation. And then special ed tuitions, just a reminder, we budget all of the special ed tuitions... Well, we pay for all the special ed tuitions out of this account in the local budget, and then we transfer some of the costs to the circuit breaker revolving fund. So the total amount we budget for special ed tuition is $7.3 million. And we have paid and encumbered $4.4 million through September. And then Amy will still be encumbering more tuitions in the next coming months. But we also prepaid fiscal '26 tuitions last year, which we... That was about $1.83 million. So if you look at kind of the second chart, that kind of gives us a current outlook of our special ed tuitions. And we are expecting to be favorable pretty much by that prepayment amount, the 1.883 million. And then we will... We received an extra $280,000 of circuit breaker funds in July of this year because the... They increased the amount that transportation was reimbursed. It was originally reimbursed at 41%, and they upped it to the 75%. So we are predicting to be favorable in this category by the prepayment amount, and then a little bit of that extra $280,000 that we received in circuit breaker.
I just ask a question. The money we... In town meeting, they transferred back, budget transferred back. Where does this figure into this?
It... I tried to do a little footnote.
Okay.
It does figure into this. So basically, it's kind of the footnote on the bottom of page two. We had budgeted the offset for circuit breaker to be $3.557 million. If we hadn't have gotten the town meeting to reallocate the free cash back to us, that number wouldn't... We wouldn't have been able to achieve that number because the balance wouldn't have been there. We would have had to dip into other reserves. But since they voted that back to us, and since we received the extra $280,000, we're really going to be up at 3872891.
Okay, so it's already baked in that number?
It's already baked in.
Right.
And then the last part of the memo is just a little reminder of what's going on with our school choice revolving fund, because at one point, we used to fund special ed tuitions out of here. We are not anymore. We're funding the one-to-one computer initiative. So that is just showing, you know, our balance of $3.2 million. And then we have... We're going to have three charges to that for the one-to-one computers, and we're expecting to end the balance at about $3 million. Any questions on the local operating budget of $75.65 million? No?
I just want to say two things. One, I was really pleased yesterday that nobody asked questions about the 408-963, because I found it confusing when it was first presented. So I think we were clear enough on what it was, and that was really good. And the other thing I want to say is, Joanna, I really appreciate that you go to all our town meetings.
Yeah.
And that, you know, you... No, because...
She really likes them, though.
She loves it. But probably you wouldn't go that far, but it really does make a huge difference. And so I want you to know, I really, truly appreciate that. And it just really shows to me, and I think to everybody, that, you know, you're an integral part of this whole entire process for this district. And where we are financially is in large part due to everything that happens in that department, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on the local budget?
The next pages are the grant and revolving fund summary. So this has been updated for the 2026 grants, and then some of the multi-year grants that we finished have moved off of the report. And then the grant... Or the revolving funds are on the last page. So up at the top are the multi-year carryover grants that we're still have money on that we're spending, such as in Title I and the special ed IDEA. And then the second section are the newly awarded grants just this summer, mostly the entitlement grants. And then the lower section is some of the private grants and circuit breaker. E-rate, things like that. And then the last page is just all the revolving funds, school nutrition, athletics, childcare, transportation.
Any questions on these?
I do have one question. I noticed that Innovation Pathways for the year '26 was listed, but it's shown as $0. Do you... Could you explain what that means?
Yep, so we had... It wasn't approved by July... Or by September 30th, but it was approved like October 2nd. So I wanted to kind of put it out there to say it's coming, and then in the next report, we'll show the $50,000 that it's coming.
That's great. It's much better than what I wondered, which was, did we get awarded $0 for that? So...
It's a place holder.
Any other questions?
In that light, it looks like all the federal stuff is being funded.
Yes.
Which is great.
Yes.
All right, everybody else good on that? And then just forget the...
Yep, and then this is just the student activity account, so for all the clubs and sports. So the high school balance is about $182,000. The McCarthy is $32,000, and the Parker is $73,000. And then there's all the clubs and teams in their balance.
Any questions on the activity funds? Great. Do we usually vote to just accept this as a first quarter?
Just accept the report as a report of progress.
Okay. I move that we accept... Accept?
Yep.
The report that was just presented to us on our financial standing, the first quarter's financial report for fiscal year 2026 as presented.
Seconded.
Good motion. All right, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you, Joanna, for doing that.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to switch into... Going to do a little bit out of order, so we're going to switch into the capital planning, and we're going to talk about next year's capital plan work, which is going to be getting underway very soon. But I just wanted to give you a quick little update, and she has some pictures of a couple of the final projects that happened this spring, just for the viewing audience that maybe didn't get a chance to come out to see some of the schools. So this past summer, one of the big focus areas for us was building out the secure entryways at the five remaining schools. So this is at Byham. On the far left picture, you can just kind of see what the entryway used to look like. And you can see that the double kind of glass windows closest to the wall near the office were removed. And basically, that's where we built the secure entryway. In the middle picture, you can see that. It actually blends in quite well to the building, and the far right picture is just a view if you actually came in from the outside of the building. So you come into that little area, you check in on the right with the iPad. You can correspond with the office. And then if you get, you know, clearance to get into the building, they press and allow you in. Oftentimes, people are just actually dropping off stuff for their kids if they forgot like a book or lunch or something like that. So most of the schools have like a little shelf. You can see here, they have like a little bucket that you can just leave stuff in, and it really just minimizes the amount of traffic coming in and out of the buildings. So that's worked very well for us. While we're over at Byham, each summer, we've been trying to update one of the school libraries. We had done Harrington last summer, so this summer was Byham's turn. So you can see that they got completely renovated, new flooring, lighting was upgraded, bookshelves, furniture on the right was all added. It's modular, it's very movable stuff. The kids really like it, there's little reading nooks. And so that project went over very well. Bill worked with one of our vendors on that. We'll be looking to do another elementary school this coming summer. At Byham also, might seem like a small thing, but it's a big thing to the community that utilizes the school. The basketball hoops were all completely changed out in the building, and these are the ones that go up and down. So for like, for the smaller child basketball, we can lower now and raise and lower the hoops automatically. So that's a big thing for basketball folks. This is the new center entryway. This is a little bit of a different design because center had the double doors outside that you ring in to get into the building. And here, at the very top of the landing, we constructed the wall, which you see in the middle screen. You're seeing the inside of the school, not the outside of the school. But you basically come up, check into the office on the left to present, and if you're authorized to go in, they would release and allow you into the building. This has worked very well at this school. When we get to South Row, it was very similar because they already had the double exterior doors. We had to construct a hallway in the inside. Center also got the new basketball hoops, which go up and down. Harrington Elementary School, almost textbook, like Byham, the buildings are very similar in size. So the far left picture, again, there was no vestibule. The middle picture, how it was built in. And then on the far right is when you enter from the street. Again, that's worked out very well. Harrington had their... They're the only elementary school we have with the hardwood floor, which is highly desirable. But they had the gym floor completely redone this summer and refinished with the lines and the logo. Came out very nice. And then Harrington also got the hoops that automatically adjust up and down. South Row Elementary School, again, this is a completely different revamp. So you come in on the far left was the old picture. We actually took down that inner doorway just to free up some space. So in the middle picture, when you're coming in off the street, you check in on the left. When you're granted access to the building, they buzz you in, and you're able to go in. So that has worked out at South Row as well. In South Row, you have the two left pictures with the old hoops, two right pictures of the hoops that go up and down. Oh, actually, I said they were the only school with the hardwood floor, but South Row apparently has one, too. They like it over there, too. Parker Middle School, again, very similar setup to Harrington and Byham with the far left, two windows were removed, and the new entryway was installed there. That has come out very well. And this is the one that has on the left, the bookshelf. You can see where the parents can just drop stuff off for kids. But again, it just cuts down on traffic. At the high school, this is really just more cosmetic. On the far left, you can see all the red kind of awnings and metalwork had just deteriorated and really faded over the years. So all of the exterior red metal of the school was repainted this past summer, and it really pops if you drive by. A lot of it even had like the underlayers were starting to show through, so it had like different colors and things. So the high school paint job on all the metal came out really nice. That's the picture on the far right. It honestly doesn't even do it justice when you pull up to the... When you pull up to the school, it really, again, it pops. At the high school, they completely gutted and redid the wood shop down in the, in the basement of the building. This is kind of wood shop, tech lab, tech room at this point. They still have all the woodworking equipment, but they also integrate, added some additional pieces of equipment as well as new furnishings for the staff and students. And that's been very, very well received. Not to put you on the spot, do either one of you guys have a class down that way?
Yeah, I take wood shop.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, it's really nice there.
You like the new room?
It's super cool. Compared to last year, everything's like brand new. It's like a completely different room.
Well.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, I took it last year, so I didn't get this cool new room.
Well, I'm glad one of you could enjoy it. It did, it did actually come out really nice. And that was, that's just a little overview. Just to begin, because we didn't get a chance to see all of those different sites, just to, to show them to you. So then if we start shifting into fiscal '27, it's hard to believe we're already starting to talk about fiscal '27, but our capital projects. For tonight's purposes, I really just wanted to kind of give you the list to show you that what I'm kind of starting to work from. We're not asking for any action from you tonight on this. But we have a rolling five-year capital plan at the school department. That actually was a 10-year capital plan originally. We worked with Doran Whittier on, but we're already five years into it. So we're in the last five years of the plan. DPW also has a kind of a project list with some of the bigger items that we didn't have on ours, like the boilers and roofs, things along those lines. I've integrated them all into this document that you have before you. And then I've gone through it and just made some notes, color-coded things by fiscal year and what ultimately will be removing from the list. And you can see, we've actually done a tremendous amount of work over the course of this past year, year and a half. But we'll say one example was the top line at the high school. We had wanted to renovate the art classrooms. And so that had been on as a capital project, but it just didn't get funded because of all the different competing priorities. So that was something, it did take us two, three years to do. But with one-time school department money, we were able to actually complete that over the last two summers. So like, that's a project that'll be removed. And then I know we've talked about this previously. When we do some of that one-time use of our funding for these projects, it just allows us to get further down the capital plan list. I'm not going to read every single one to you, but there's a bunch on here that are like roof-related. Obviously, last night at town meeting, town meeting approved another $2.5 million for the McCarthy roof. So that's, the back section's going to get completed next summer. The South Row roof qualified for an MSBA grant that we applied for. That's almost a $4 million roof. That about $2 million is going to be paid for by the state, $2 million by the town. And you can kind of go right down the, the list. So all of the things that are, you know, basically removed will come off. And again, I, I think we did some considerable work over the course of this last year, year and a half. You'll see notes to defer several projects. Most of those deferrals are related to Parker, just because we're, we're doing all the safety, life, life system type work. But any of the cosmetic aesthetic type stuff, we're waiting on the, the new building project. And then I actually, for tonight's purposes, I just sorted the rest of the list by school because it used to be sorted by fiscal year, so you could actually kind of see what was coming up. But for today's purpose, if you just happen to go to a school, I wanted you to be able to see what was on the list. And then internally, we're working this week with Christine Clancy and the group over at DPW to kind of come up with a recommended joint list on projects for you to consider and ultimately, the capital planning committee to consider. There are some big items, you know, that we're, we're talking about. We've been able to do, obviously, like boilers has been significant. We do have a series of roofs that are coming up. And the pricing on the roofs is just much more significant than I think we had thought about. Internally, just as a little flag, just to let you know, this past summer, we did that. Bill Silver and the tech group did the new clock system that they piloted over at Harrington. That went very well. People seemed to be very happy with that. It was an integrated clock and intercom system in the school. His group is able to do on their own, basically, probably a school a summer. What we did talk about this morning was possibly even having a vendor help. A lot of it's the pulling of the cable. So having a vendor help do some of the cable pulls at one of the other schools, so we could at least get two schools done next summer. One of the schools we know we want to do is South Row because at South Row, the exterior roof is being replaced. On the inside of the building, the acoustic ceiling is going to be replaced with like a drop ceiling that we have here. So if we're already opening up the ceiling, it's a perfect time to do all the pulls of the cabling. So we're looking at South Row and we're looking at one other elementary school, likely Byham, because we know the Byham and the Harrington are the same, basically, building. And we know what, what it took to do the Harrington this past summer. So it would make sense to pop over to Byham next summer. So we'll likely do, or the recommendation will be to you to do South Row and then Byham. But we're going to refine some of the pricing on that. The other issue that you're going to see on here, which kind of jumped out to me as just a huge number, is most of the buildings were recommended for new intrusion or security systems. And they're running about a half a million dollars apiece. And when we were talking with Bill, again, that was before we started doing some of the IT work with the control access and everything, because you would have had to have gone to every, you know, door, every access point, wire it, put the contacts on and everything. So it was pretty significant. We've already done a significant amount of stuff with that on our own. So we're going through now to kind of see exactly what remains to be done. Oftentimes, like the security panel, when you walk into the buildings, might need to be updated. We might need to add some additional sensors on the first floors of the buildings. But we're revising that number. It's not going to be a half million dollars per school. But I just don't know exactly when those final numbers are going to come in. But that's like a big thing that is on the, on the horizon. So over the course of this week, early next week, we'll work with DPW to put together that list. The next time we meet, we'll share kind of a recommend, recommended list with you. We can talk about that. And ultimately, in November, need to kind of finalize and figure out what we want to request. Ballpark parameters, the town has typically been funding about $6 million a capital a year. Approximately, half has been school-related, half has been town department-related, just based on our sizes. You know, some of our projects, again, are just significant, like, you know, the McCarthy roof. Even last night, we got the extra 2.5, but we had already allocated 1.2. So just to do from the back, you know, we go into the gym, have to go down the ramp. The cafeteria, the main gym, the small gym, the modular classrooms, that's $3.7 million. So that's a big number just for that. We still have to do the front part of McCarthy roof. So when we do like, you know, it might take a couple of years even to be able to fund some of these roof projects. We may have to wait and see if we have a, once you hit 28 years, you're potentially eligible for MSBA funding. And then MSBA would fund, you know, half the roof. So we may be in a situation also of just because there's so many of them that are going to be coming, figuring out if someone, you know, is something we can keep operable, you know, patch for a year to kind of get that extra year of life to then be able to get, say, half off if we did the, if we did the roof. So this is what internally we're working on. I just at least wanted to give you the list to kind of show you, you know, documentation of some of the work we did, which I think, I think we should all be happy with. But just know that we are kind of finalizing this over the next week or two. And the next time we meet, we'll continue talking about this.
Any questions?
I'm curious. I see that there is, there are a lot of items around code-compliant, handicapped, accessible cabinets, countertop shelving and sinks. I know, and it looks like those are on this spread out over a few years as, as an imagined pace of doing that. And they are pretty significant cost-wise. I'm curious if any of, I know sometimes you make certain upgrades and it triggers the requirements that you make, certain ADA accessible upgrades. Are any of these requirements versus things that we would like to do in order to be more inclusive and accessible?
Yeah, they're not requirements at this point. And so when we did the 10-year capital plan with Doran Whittier, they prioritized and helped us kind of sequence when things would need to be done. So there were items that they identified that were in like the immediate to three-year timeframe that had to be funded. Those were a lot of like real code issues, life safety system upgrades that were necessary. Significant had to be done immediately, we did those. Then they had some short-term, you know, three to five-year projects that they recommended be done. They had some medium-term projects, you know, six to eight years be done. And then they had an eight-year, eight to 10-year, they call it long-range window. Things that, you know, you'd be nice to do if you had funding, they weren't overly pressing. And that's the category that these all fell into. We're just kind of at the eight to 10-year point of the plan. So I personally don't see us advancing those projects just because, again, there's nothing in the buildings that are happening that trigger them. We, you know, do keep like the, we talked about this today, actually, like the functioning water in the classrooms, things like that. Those are upgraded if something were to fail. But this was originally thought about actually like pulling out all of the existing casework in classrooms and putting in new casework. I just don't think, given all the other demands that we're going to have, that that's going to rise to the level of, it's more of like a want than a need.
Yep.
And at this point, again, there's nothing requiring it to be done. It's basically, McCarthy could potentially, you know, again, this wasn't even one of the schools that was targeted, but McCarthy could potentially get close, but it's still not going to trigger it with all the roof work and things like that. Because you got to figure out, by the time we're done with that roof, it could be nearing, you know, eight to nine million dollars of just roof work at that particular school. And you have to take a look at the assessed value of the property. There's a whole bunch of different things to be done. But the elementary schools aren't going to be triggered by it.
I was specifically thinking about McCarthy, knowing all the work that we've been doing on the roof. Knowing that we're deferring a lot of that stuff at Parker for obvious reasons.
Right.
I was, I had McCarthy in mind because I was like, that's the other school we're investing quite a bit of money in around.
Yeah, I still, I mean, the last we looked, McCarthy still was not going to trigger it. But if there was a school that was even going to get close, it'd be McCarthy.
Okay.
But that certainly is on our radar. What I would say is if you read through these and there's, if you have like a question about something, you don't fully know what something is, or you want me to do a little bit more detail, please let me know. I'm happy to do that. We're also trying to like refine some of the pricing for some of these projects just because even something that we thought two or three years ago we wanted to do might be much more expensive now. So we want to just make sure if we do an ask of the capital committee, we have good pricing behind it. The other thing to bear in mind, these projects, even if they are funded in the spring, would likely not be accomplished until the summer of '27. Because by the time you get your funding, you get your stuff together, you're looking at '27. This coming summer is going to be an incredibly busy summer for us. So we already mentioned South Row, interior roof, exterior roof. South Row, actually, there was a little handicapped accessibility code thing that was triggered with two of the bathrooms over there. So we actually have to upgrade two of the adult bathrooms at that building. So that's going to be happening. Last night, town meeting approved the switch gear, the electric switch gear being updated. That's another significant thing at South Row. The roof at McCarthy is going to be significant. So there's a bunch of major projects. On top of those, we also have three elevators that are being installed this summer. McCarthy has an elevator. Westlands has an elevator. And high school, the high school elevator is going, what's that?
We have so many elevators in this town.
Lot of elevators.
Everything we find elevator.
Lot of old elevators.
Unfortunately, we have one per building.
Yeah.
But they're all getting old at the same time.
Yeah, you're in trouble.
But again, this is, I just wanted to kind of share this with you as a starting point. We'll keep working on this over the next couple of weeks. But that's kind of where we're at so far.
I was, I was going to ask you, the switch gear money that we, was approved yesterday, that targeted to a particular school?
South Row.
South Row.
Yeah, because there's a significant amount electrical that's going to be done with the panels. We got to remove the old solar panels, put new solar panels on, it all has to be tied in. So Christine was thinking this summer, if we're doing all those projects over there anyway, we may as well make sure that the electric system can take everything. So, no, that was specific for.
Okay, because I see it's on the other schools too, you know?
It's on all, yeah. So we did McCarthy this past summer.
Yeah.
So McCarthy was done. And that went very well. Next one is South Row again, because of the roof project. So that's one, again, it's just a funding issue and also just like a manpower issue. We'll probably end up doing like one a year. I don't see that being like, you know, doing four or five at the same time. But the other thing, I thought Christine did a very nice job last night just explaining that, you know, it's not adding completely new electric to the schools. It's basically just changing out the panel that's there to accept all the power. Everything is still old in these buildings. You know, we're, we're talking about the new Parker School building, but the rest of the stock is still aging. And, you know, we, we're running into potential problems with this stuff. We're trying to keep it alive for as long as we can. But you do need to make these investments in the older buildings to make sure they do stay functioning.
Anybody else? Thank you for sharing those pictures, by the way.
Yeah, no, you're welcome.
It's great to see it, it was all done. We saw it in the process of, see it with the carp, you know.
It's gone, it's gone over very well.
And I can say, as a, as a parent at two of these schools and a visitor at a third, I, I've really noticed they've been, they've seemed to be really seamless in terms of how they're being used. And I feel like I get a very consistent experience from one school to the next. And, you know, there's other people like me who are in different schools throughout their day. So I think it's nice that there's a real kind of unified approach now at all of our schools, at least except for the Westlands.
Right.
Yeah, weird question. Were the outdoor in the Byham, were the outdoor basketball hoops replaced too?
The PTO did that.
Okay. They look great.
Yeah.
Somebody did it.
No, it's, do they call themselves a PTO or something else?
No, it's the.
BSA.
BSA.
Thank you.
The BSA paid for them.
Yeah, that's cool.
So, and again, so if you drive through the Byham, like the parking lot's in tough shape over there. That's one of the projects that's on the capital plan through the town for next year. But the poles, they actually installed because they're installed on the grass. So we're still going to be able to pave like right up to them, so almost pave like a new basketball court for them. We didn't want them to have to wait another year to get the new hoops. They do look very nice.
They look good, yep.
But BSA paid for those.
All right.
Next item, item number eight is the personnel report. Just a list of your personnel transactions for the month of September. Some new hiring again, a few resignations and a couple of retirements that became effective in September.
I have a quick question. I know somebody who is, was recently hired as a, this name is not on here, as a, I don't know exactly what the title is, but through Title I funds, I believe, supporting students who need kind of pull-out support at Harrington School. I, I see that that's not on here. Is that because it is a technically consulting role rather than a hire in the district? Or, like, I don't see any of the, because I know there's several people who are working in that position.
Yeah, let me find out for you. The interventionists that we hire through the, the grant programs. I remember seeing some on the reports previously.
I just don't know what their start, I don't know who the person is and what their start.
The one I'm thinking of, her first date was, was considered an October 1st start date, and so I didn't see this. I know that she mentioned there were several others and I didn't remember anecdotally having seen them. So I wasn't sure if they were hired as consultants or if they were like considered hires.
No, they, they are hires, they.
Yeah, so we hired, I'll have to just look back at the HR. We hired, I think, 17. And they are part-time employees. And I'd have to go back and look at old reports to see if we showed the interventionists on like the October reports.
Yeah, I might just be forgetting it, but I, I knew that that was happening. I think it's great, but I just was curious why it wasn't on.
We'll find out for you, and I'll shoot you an email even just to confirm. If they didn't start until October, they wouldn't have been on the September report anyway. They would have come out on the October report. We're always a month behind on the reporting. So this is technically the, the September hires.
I just know there's some October dates here.
But they may have been hired prior, just didn't start till those dates. So it could be.
I will find, I will find out for you. But, and again, we very well may not list the part-time people either. So let me confirm and I'll shoot you an email.
Sure, yeah. I was just curious, I guess part of the reason I'm asking is because I, I guess I was just curious, you know, hearing somebody I knew got hired for that was my first hearing about that role. I know only Title I schools are eligible, but I was curious what exactly the role of the interventionist is. And you know what that looks like? It's, I know it's a little different than our other curriculum support type roles, so.
But is it different? I mean, we've had part-time math interventionists who don't share the same role as the big title interventionists. So maybe they're called something different. Are they just called tutors?
That's what I was, I was wondering, I was kind of wondering.
Because we've had people for years who come in in elementary schools and, and, you know, take individual students for short bits of time to tutor in math and things like that. I don't know what their titles are, but it's not new.
Interventionists, we have tutors, but we have interventionists that co, hired through the Title I grant.
Right, and we have tutors. So we don't always, I mean, it's not.
We have some tutors on the, on the local budget. The interventionists are typically, just to keep the job title separate, they're on the grants. I just honestly don't recall if they're on the reports or not, but I'll, I'll find out. But this isn't like a new thing. This, we've had these roles for, for quite some time.
Yeah, it was honestly, like I said, because I knew somebody who was hired for it. It was my first time, because it's at a school that I am not as intimately aware of.
was my first time, because it's at a school that I am not as intimately aware of, so I wasn't, you know, in the loop with it.
Yeah, I'll find out for you.
Other questions, Maria?
On these interventionists, were we able to fill all the positions?
We're close. We're close.
We're close, okay, good.
17 is a good number. We typically have anywhere between 17 and like.
That's good.
20, 21-ish.
Good, because that was a problem. Yeah. That's great.
Anything else on personnel? All right, I guess we do have a field trip there?
Yeah, we had a field trip coming in.
Oh, my goodness. To make a motion.
We have a motion coming. So this is the Charleston High School senior class banquet. News to me, the Westwood Regency is closing?
Yes.
I just saw that officially announced.
Closing for permanent?
Yeah, permanently.
2018th of December.
Closing it, tearing it down, putting in new.
Apartments.
Apartments.
Really?
Yeah, so that was the, the previous venue for the banquet. So the senior class went to look at different venues or banquet halls, and they have selected Alpine Grove, which is in Hollis, New Hampshire.
Here comes New Hampshire again.
In New Hampshire, I know. So they're, they're looking to, to have their banquet there on June 5th.
Okay.
So they would request permission for that.
I move that we approve the Charleston High School 2026 senior class banquet at Alpine Grove in Hollis, New Hampshire on June 5th, 2026.
Second.
Any questions on the field trip? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
And that's all I have.
All right, anybody have any liaison reports to share?
I do have one. Just a couple of days after our last meeting was the first McCarthy and Parker joint PTO meeting on the 9th. Heard a lot of updates from both schools. On the Parker side, they spoke of how there's a real, a large number of new staff there this year, and in a good way, they felt like the chemistry was there, the staff is off to a really good start, working well together. They mentioned that restorative circles are really big at Parker this year, and everybody was very excited about some sort of extracurricular and co-curricular things happening, one of which worth naming was they brought in the bionic project that went really, really well, focused on kind of universal design. So that was great at Parker. They do have a pizza, pumpkins, and paperbacks night on Wednesday for the Parker community, combination of ability to get to the book fair, a pumpkin decorating contest, and kind of a community event, so. At McCarthy, they, I got the good fortune of meeting their new assistant principal, who was present at the meeting, and it was great to meet him. They raved about the positive impact of having two supervisors of students in the school, which was a shift this year. They also were feeling really positive about the, the year. They noted specifically that there's a bunch of new math teachers, and so that's sort of the biggest area where there's a shift, but they all come with experience, and they're feeling good about it. One thing they're really working on right now as a school is they are hoping to establish a really high-functioning best buddies chapter that's not just focused on athletics, but also after-school leadership and deeper involvement in the school community. And for those who aren't familiar, last year, we, we did have some visitors talking about best buddies and the experience of pairing students of sort of different learning skills and needs together to really engage in fun activities and give a real inclusive community for a variety of students. And the last thing I will mention is that they, and I'm sure we will hear this from Center School as well, are really getting pumped about recycle day on November 8th, which is, for the schools, a very big fundraiser, but it's also a great chance for the community to get rid of things that are hard to get rid of.
All right, Susan, anything?
Not since our last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I attended the council of schools meeting, and so did our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, right? It's always a two-hour meeting at least and comprehensive. They have full, full group together, the whole executive team. They are going to do, again, this year, the community read-in. So they talked about that, and that'll be right at the beginning of March for us to keep that in mind. It's March 2nd through the 6th. They're still, they're running the photo contract again, so they talked about picture day and so on. And then they give all the PTOs an opportunity to do a report. A principal, the principal of South Row, I believe, is Terry came, and she presented on what's going on at the various schools. And then we give a report, and I got to share the report this time because.
You did a very good job.
Right, well, thank you, because Dr. Lang was at your meeting for the building. So, but he came in towards the end. And I think, you know, it was a pretty good discussion on, on the things that are going on. They are a very involved group, and that is for sure. They're helping each other along the way. And one of the things they all complain about is that it's very difficult to get volunteers. And so I'll use this to say that the best, in my opinion, the best school districts are always the one that have great parents involved, and we want to make sure that parents remain involved as much as possible. And I know all of us have that common experience when we go to these PTO meetings, that it's very difficult. It's a lot of hard work, but it pays off so much for the schools. So if parents can get involved, please do.
John, anything?
Nope.
All right, as mentioned, we did have a building committee meeting, we're just getting updates on where we are. A lot of what they presented, we'll see tomorrow night in terms of the schedules. And it's, it's great, when you see all the work that has to be done between now and January, it's, it's, it's a lot. But I, I think they're well-equipped, the, you know, the people we're working with seem like they have a good handle on everything, so.
Yeah, I'm very happy with them.
Yeah?
They've been, they've been very good to work with.
Is there a shift, I'm sorry, with left field?
There's another.
Oh, just in their business model.
Okay, so it's.
It's, it's not going to affect us at all.
It's not going to impact us in any sort of concerning way.
No, David and Hamdi are our two-point people. They're still called left field. Their company is just joining a larger.
Corporate changes, okay.
Right, right, yeah. But we should be good.
Yeah, they're staying on, and I think part of the reason they were either acquired or whatnot was because of their municipal work, so they definitely want to be a showcase for what they do. But no, our team is staying intact.
That's great.
All right, any new items?
To put on the future.
Anything you want to bring up?
Yeah, one of the things I thought of as we went through the budget update is if we could get some idea on what's going on with class numbers, how we're doing, when you have a chance for that. Yeah, whenever I see.
We usually, no, we always look at that. So October 1st is when we have to do our submission to the state. A SIMS report goes in, and then it has to get certified. So once it's certified, I do all the enrollment numbers for you, and I'll put that report together. But I do that every fall.
Wonderful.
And we use that as a basis for budgeting.
Thank you.
Anything else, anybody else? I had a question I have to ask the assistant superintendent, even though she's going to kill me. We had the discussion last night, but I'm sure people at home want to know the new graduation requirements, what, if any, impact they're going to have on our students, do they even